Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, school committee meeting for town of Tingsborough. My name is Rebecca Stanton, and I call this meeting to order. Please be reminded that these meetings are audio and video recorded. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Grace Shambly, student representative.
Hi, Rob Mullen.
Dustine Puma.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Good evening, Julie Guastucci.
Ryan McMahon.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Bryce, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to acknowledge that Mr. Tenerella has joined us.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Tenerella. I'll seek a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of March first, two thousand and twenty-two, and the executive session minutes of March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Executive session minutes not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries six zero zero. Moving on to citizen time.
I guess I'm it.
Thank you. Just as a matter of housekeeping, please state your name and address, and citizen time is limited to two minutes.
Thank you. I am Danielle Athanas. I live at twenty-eight Jamie Way, and good evening. I am here tonight to speak my strong support of the new middle school project, and I'm speaking for myself, as well as on behalf of the vote yes for a new Tingsborough Middle School Committee. As you're aware, during this year's town meeting on May third, we will be asked to decide whether or not to proceed with building a new middle school for this community. The Middle School Building Committee, which a few of you in this room are a part of, has worked really tirelessly over the last couple of years to get this project done. I believe the count is thirty-seven meetings have been held of this particular committee, which is astounding to me when I heard that the average is three to five. So I just want to applaud the efforts of that committee for doing that. Most committees, such as our own MSBC, do only meet those handful of times, and their hard work has resulted in a solid plan for a new middle school for our students that far surpasses the fifty-four-year-old building that has long since outlived its useful lifespan. We have a tremendous opportunity on our hands right now to build an eighty-two million-dollar school building, give or take, for only fifty-four million dollars, which is still a lot of money, but a significant discount once you consider that the state can reimburse us about twenty-eight million dollars. It's not a small thing to sneeze at. We cannot let this opportunity pass us by. It may not come up again for ten years or more. I would ask you, the school committee members, to take advantage of your standing in the community, to speak on the importance of this subject as you're out and about. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors. This is so important to our community and our students. I encourage any of you that have friends or family members with questions in town to come to the community forum tomorrow night. Send them to the community forum. I thank you for your time, and I think that was under two minutes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any other citizens, so we'll move on to correspondence. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did receive an email from Paul Ash regarding school committee training. He reached out to me last week. I think in a conversation with the chair, I think it was most appropriate. As you know, Dr. Ash, excuse me, was here in September to do a school committee and admin training session for us all. We were unable to have that work session, see that work session through to completion. So we are rescheduling that work session. That being said, given the timing of the election and everything that's coming up in May, I did ask Dr. Ash, in consultation with the chair, if he could be available in June. Dr. Ash is available to come on Tuesday, June twenty-first, for that three-hour work session. It's a great opportunity to kind of calibrate as a committee administrative team to make sure that we have appropriate goals. Our strategy for district improvement is up and running, and we're all kind of working collegiately, pulling the rope in the same direction. So at some point, we'll have to have a conversation about reaching out and making sure we're all available for the twenty-first, but it is a great opportunity to bring Dr. Ash back and do a training for us.
That's great. I think when he came in the past, it was a really good session. I think it'll be good to make sure that he's here for the new school committee when that forms after the election.
How many meetings will we have with the new member prior to the June twenty-first meeting?
That will actually be their first meeting. No, I'm sorry. There's a meeting in May. May twenty-fourth. So right now, the committee, and we're going to talk about the schedule a little bit later, the schedule's a little bit off, but right now, the election is the seventeenth, so the new member will be have the May twenty-fourth meeting, and then we wouldn't meet again until the twenty-first with Dr. Ash.
Does it make sense to push Dr. Ash off till July or August, so we have a couple meetings with the new members? Let them get their feet under their arm a little bit before jumping into a three-hour work session?
I'll leave that up to the will of the committee. I don't think it's a bad idea to, because I think part of what Dr. Ash does is a lot of school committee training and kind of outline the roles and responsibilities of a superintendent and a school committee and kind of set those parameters. So it's not a bad idea to have him in as soon as possible, but certainly if the committee would like to see that later on in the summer, that's not a problem. I can reach back out to him.
I think from my standpoint, he had come the first year that I was on the school committee, and he came relatively early in the game. I don't know how many meetings I had been to at that point, but for me, it helped me to understand what was my role, because when you run for the school committee, you may not fully understand exactly what are the components of the role. You may think that you have influence over something that you don't, and I just found it really helpful to have it early on so that I was doing what the expectations of the role were.
Yeah, I think that's actually a great point, so I'll withdraw my suggestion.
Was there any other discussion? Moving on to personnel. We have a notification of intent to retire for Cheryl Berman, a district-wide school psychologist of thirty-two years. Congratulations, Ms. Berman. Share the success, Grace.
The PTO will be holding a bingo night on April seventh, and families are encouraged to pre-register by March twenty-fifth. TES will also be joining the Great Kindness Challenge and the Kids Peace Team to directly support Ukrainian refugee families through the Love Through Ukraine video project and fundraising campaign. On Wednesday, students and staff are encouraged to wear blue and yellow and donate a dollar, while student council members will film a brief video. TMS has embarked on their St. Patrick's Spirit Week. Math teachers celebrate a Pi Day and are preparing for MCAS coming in April. At THS, the try-two exams took place. The winter athletic season has come to an end. Highlights in the season include the wrestling tournament, winning the Division Two North Sectional, and the girls' basketball, winning the Mid-Watch C Tournament. Spring sports will start March twenty-first. Congratulations to our Students of the Month, Ella Campbell, Kyle Cornell, Maya McCarthy, and Josh Savoy, and good luck to THS Theater, as they will be competing in the preliminary round of the MT, METG Festival on March nineteenth and twentieth. And then congratulations to THS DECA, on our trip to Boston, Kira Grithis, Brianna Barado, Giovanna Pleros Bazioso, and Stephanie Suzo, all top finalists in their categories. And then Sophie Lombard, Kat Panagakis, and me won the International Business Plan category to advance to Atlanta.
So we're not going to gloss over that. So I'm sorry, could you say those last three names again, exactly what you won, please?
We won the International Business Plan category to advance to Atlanta.
So it was Grace, Sophie Lombard, and Kat Panagakis, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So congratulations to you three. And Madam Chair, I do have to note, we did receive, I did receive an email late today from Mr. Ogden that was looking for school committee approval to allow these three champions to travel to Atlanta to compete internationally, against international competition as well as part of the DECA program. It was unable to make the agenda yet, so I can bring that forth on April twelfth, but I would certainly hope that the school committee would embrace and support these students going and competing at the next level, because what they did was incredible, and we're so proud of them.
Congratulations, that's wonderful.
That's amazing.
Do we need to wait until April fourth?
May twelfth.
In light of the late notification I received, it was unable to make the agenda. If the school committee wanted to take emergency action on it, I think that's probably appropriate.
I think it's appropriate to add it to the agenda tonight. We had no way of knowing it would be an issue. I think that falls well within our rights to add it to the agenda tonight. And as such, I'd like to make a motion to approve the trip to Atlanta.
All right, is there any discussion? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries six zero zero.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Grace.
Well, if I ask it, how is that being paid for? Will there be fundraising of any sort, or?
I think there's going to be fundraising, but it's not entirely figured out.
Just go see the Tenerella.
Please make sure you bring that forward when you do, because there's members like Mr. McMahon here, who's got a lot of money.
I will give you all of Tony's money that you need.
But yes, we would be happy to participate in any way we can in fundraising for this as well.
Thank you.
We'll hold him down on the way out. You grab his wallet.
Moving on to subcommittee updates. This evening, we did have a meeting for the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. I think we'll discuss that a little bit later in the meeting. We did not have a previously scheduled meeting on the policy. We will have that next meeting and continue moving forward with the policy. I don't know which member of the capital asset committee would like to provide an update.
The chair.
Isn't that you? Damn it. The capital asset subcommittee continues to discuss priorities for the town as a whole, and I'm sure we will be very soon again before presenting our recommendations at tri-board meeting on April eleventh.
Anything to add, Tony?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay, great. Am I missing any subcommittee updates? I don't think so. That was a lot for one night. All right, moving on to unfinished business. Superintendent update, Dr. Flanagan.
Thank you. Dr. Branko, right into the slide deck here. I'll head to the first slide. So TMS Building Project, a lot of momentum with the school building project. I know that it's all over social media. We've had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions about it, so tomorrow night's a big night. I'm hopeful that a lot of members of our community will come out and learn more about the project, get your questions answered. We're trying to release snippets of information that's digestible and forty-five second to one-minute responses, answering specific questions that come up. I'm going to talk a little bit about a couple of questions in a minute here, but as you know, we have to do a community forum tomorrow night. Right now, the final plan has been submitted to the MSBA, was submitted on March third. We're waiting for the end of April for the MSBA to finally approve the final submission. And then it comes down to two big nights, May third, town meeting, we need a two-thirds majority of town meeting, and if we get the two-thirds majority of town meeting, it'll then be on the ballot for May seventeenth. We continue to do everything we can to get the word out there about the project. I think the mailer that we sent was an absolute home run. I'm hopeful that the tri-board meeting that we have at the end of March, March twenty-eighth, I'm hopeful at that point that we'll have some resolution on what the tax impact will be, and I think that's ultimately what every family wants to know, is what's it going to cost me in the end? So once we get that information, we will do another community mailer. Everyone in town will receive another mailer with this information. So we're trying to get the word out there. I encourage and implore anyone, if you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me or any member of the school building committee. Please check the website. Please scan one of our QR codes that are out and about on our A-frame signs around town, but we're doing everything we can to make sure people are as informed as possible. So if we can just go to the next slide, Dr. Branko. There are three questions that are out there that I just kind of want to touch tonight in this forum, and I think, you know, I did put this out last week through social media as well, but I know that there's been some discussion around, how do we get to four-hundred-and-eighty students? Right now, at Tingsborough Middle School, there are three-hundred-and-ninety-three students. Where did four-eighty come from? I assure you, it did not come from me throwing a dart at a darkboard. This was a very scientific process. So basically, there were four steps. The first step was longitudinal study undertaken by the MSBA, and they looked at things in our community like historic birth rates, they looked at female population, projected births, and school attending profiles. After looking at all this data, the MSA forecasted an increase or a trend up in our population, and the number they landed at that point was four-hundred-and-twenty students. The MSBA then did what's called a sensitivity analysis, and that's used by economists and chemists, to be honest with you, to look at multiple variables and how that impacts one's fixed variable. After looking at the multiple variables, they said, given the growth rates at TES, you need to plan for an additional fifty students. So they added fifty students onto our four-twenty. That brought us to four-hundred-and-seventy students. The MSBA then looked at our out-of-district enrollment. They used a three-point-three percent fluctuation rate and said, because of that fluctuation rate, you should add five more students. So we're at four-hundred-and-seventy-five students. They finally looked at available land, available land that's able to be developed in the community and the trend in the community with community development, and said, because of the growth in the community, you should add another five students. So that, those four factors is how we arrived at four-hundred-and-eighty students. This is a school that we're building for the next fifty years, and you know, I know that people say, well, in my neighborhood, there aren't any kids that are on the school buses. In my neighborhood, there aren't any kids that are on the school buses. I live on an eight-house cul-de-sac that sends seventeen kids to the Tingsborough Public Schools. I take it back, we have one on the school bus. But in twenty years, I may not be in that house, and my neighbors may not be in their houses, but it's still going to be a three-bedroom house, a four-bedroom house, a four-bedroom house, a three-bedroom house that's going to be available for a family in the town. So we need to think long-term about this. So how do we get it four-eighty? It's because we're looking long-term at the project, not the here and now, not what the buses look like today, but what they're going to look like in twenty-five years, when potentially some of the population turns over. Second question. How will TMS Project avoid significant cost overruns? I know that it was in the newspaper recently, and that it's playing out repeatedly in the newspaper, about a cost overrun on a school building project in a local community. Honestly, I feel for that community. That community estimated that project February two thousand and twenty. That's when their final estimation was due to the MSBA, one month before the pandemic. So all their numbers were finalized, all their borrowing was finalized, everything was solidified one month before the pandemic. The pandemic came, and the escalation went through the roof. The project that we are designing right now is building in all those contingencies. We are actually in a better spot now because we're planning a project in the midst of this, so we have the foresight to see where it could potentially go. There'll be a lot of discussion about this tomorrow night. We have slides available tomorrow night about this as well, but because of the timing of that project and when the estimates were finalized, that project was severely impacted by the pandemic. We have the benefit of planning through it. Last question. Where do middle school students go during construction? Phase one of the construction is to raise the gym, central office, and the catwalk. We are keeping the box of the building intact, so our students will still be able to go to school regular, have their regular typical day throughout the construction project. The only time they'll need to leave the middle school is to come to the high school for phys ed and wellness classes. Other than that, all their core curriculum classes will remain intact in TMS with the cafeteria and the auditorium. So they'll just come to THS for phys ed and wellness for two years, but otherwise, they're not going to be impacted in terms of the construction. So those are three big questions out there. Those are the answers to those questions. As I said, we have, thanks to Ronnie Camille and the Town Media Department, we've produced short answers to these questions. I know that a lot of people have been interviewed, you've been interviewed, Chris Pollitt's been interviewed, Matt Hanson, Town Administrator's been interviewed as well. So we're trying to put that out there in a digestible form so that people can get the real answers and be as informed as possible about this project. So that's three questions tonight. My intent is every time we have a school committee meeting, to hit three more questions and three more questions all the way up to the vote, and just kind of really address what's on people's minds. So that's all I have for that. Can I answer any additional questions about that?
Where does Central Office go once that building goes?
That's a great question. So some will come to the high school, some will come to the elementary school. I imagine we're going to have common work areas in both buildings. You know, there are eight people in Central Office right now. Dominic, who's Director of Facilities, can live in his truck, really, between the two schools, but we'll create workspaces in both schools.
Okay.
All right, and that's all I have for MSBA update.
Thank you for that.
So we're going to hold in the policy because we do not meet as a subcommittee tonight, and we're going to HC, it goes over to Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. You can, yeah, that one will work, Mark. Dr. Branko's pulling up your budget overview. I can tell you that you've pretty much seen all of these numbers. Not much has changed, with the exception of a revenue increase of ninety thousand dollars. Dr. Flanagan and myself met with Matt Hanson, our Town Administrator, just to discuss the fact that we lost care's funding, we weren't looking for any host community revenue for this year's budget, but we did have a conversation about the summer academy and the ninety thousand dollars we have budgeted for that, and Mr. Hanson thought that be a good item for APPA funding. So he did mention that he would foresee ninety thousand dollars of the town's APPA funding to cover our summer academy. So we entered that ninety thousand dollars in revenue, and that subsequently brought down your current budget request to the twenty-two million dollar figure you see at the bottom there, which is a two-point-seven percent increase over this current year's budget. So at this point, we will have a final recommendation after your public hearing next month, but if the school committee would like to make a motion to approve the current FY twenty-three school committee budget figure of twenty-two million, two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries six zero zero. Thank you, Mr. Messina.
Madam Chair, I would just also like to add, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Town Administrator Hanson. He's always been outstanding to work with. We were able to work together. We understand that there's one pot of money, and you know, I appreciate his support, and he's just a great partner to work with throughout this process.
Moving on to the superintendent evaluation update and process review. Dr. Flanagan, did you want to provide an update?
I can, sure. So in your drive tonight, you will see my self-evaluation. It's a culmination of the updates I've done this year, specifically to the modified goals that were presented two or three meetings ago. So the superintendent evaluation subcommittee did receive that information. Beginning tomorrow, the administrative team in Tingsborough will receive a link to do a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree evaluation of me. So basically, several administrators in the district will provide narrative responses to overarching questions, thematic questions. That information will go directly to the chair of the committee. I will not say that information, but it's a good perspective for you. I think it's something we implemented last year, but it's a good perspective for you to see how I work collegially with the people in the district. I know you see me every other Tuesday night here, but it's also good to understand how we work as a district team. So they'll have that, they'll be able to fill that out by the thirty-first of March, and then on April first, on April first, you will all receive an email with a link. That link will allow you to take my self-evaluation, the three-hundred-and-sixty-degree review from the administrative team, and form your own evaluation of me. So I actually want to modify one of the dates on here. The subcommittee decided tonight that they would like to get the information from you by April seventh, not April eighth. So you have one week to do the evaluation of me, and then that'll go to the chair.
Yep.
She'll collate the information, push it back out to the full committee, and then on April twelfth, we will leave, and you will go into executive session to discuss the process. If you have questions about the process, I'm happy to meet with anyone, talk through the evaluation timeline and process. The timeline got moved up this year, just for the public consumption right now, because of the change in the town meeting and the town election. So one of the things that we discussed and we thought was important was the sitting committee evaluate me and not potentially new members who didn't have the opportunity to work with me over the past year. So that's the timeline. I will certainly modify this and clean it up and send it to the full committee tomorrow, but basically, that's where we are. If I missed anything, please jump.
That's excellent. I think the only thing in there, it's on the calendar, but the subcommittee will meet over the weekend sometime between April ninth and eleventh to review the results of the administrative feedback and the committee, and that's what we'll present to the full committee on the twelfth and executive session.
Madam Chair, is the final vote with the school committee on the April twenty-sixth meeting rather than May?
So this, yeah, we haven't formally approved the meeting calendar switch yet, so.
Getting ahead of myself, sorry.
But that would be the.
But that's the intent, is to vote on the April twenty-sixth meeting if it's the will of the committee to adjust the calendar. And if not, we'll come back and reevaluate the schedule.
That's all we have for our superintendent.
All right, moving on to new business, nine A, which is the literacy grant. Dr. Branko?
So we entered this school year in our regular curriculum review cycle. It was time for the district to review our K-12 ELA curriculum. So we started that work right out of the gate in August, met with the leadership team at TES, and started to interview different consultants and partners that we could work with, because that ELA review is a real daunting one, and we have this concept in public schools that we are really trying to make sure we push forward and get everybody to understand that we are all teachers of literacy. We are all teachers of reading and writing, regardless of what subject we teach, regardless of what age bracket our students are. So knowing that, we felt like we needed a little help to make sure we had some robust direction and PD behind the work we were doing this year. So we had picked Keys to Literacy, National Organization, out of New England, actually, to come help us do that steering work and provide guidance to develop a district-wide literacy plan that will be in place by June, and we'll come back to the committee before the end of this school year and kind of give a quick overview of that work, as well as a three-year commitment with that company to do professional development to all TPS teachers over a three-year period of time, starting at the elementary, coming up to the middle, and ultimately up to the high school, so that all teachers of every subject, every grade level have really a clear understanding of our literacy plan and the instructional practices needed in their subject area to support literacy. Strangely, as we started to do that work, then a lot of information was coming out of DESI and nationally around the science of reading and some of the techniques instruction that have been used across the country recently, and some of the major foundational resources that have been used across the country, particularly in New England and here locally in Massachusetts as well. So in that second bullet, I won't read the whole thing to you, but there's a quick little blurb in here that they sent out just telling us about the extensive research around reading and writing. As a result, DESI came out with what they called the Accelerated Literacy Grant, and so they put this out as a competitive grant through DESI that went out looking for districts who are strangely a similar profile to Tingsborough. We don't often qualify for competitive grants. They tend to go to bigger cities, more diversified locations, or lower income. In this particular case, they were looking for profile similar to us, small school district under two thousand students, and they wanted you to ensure that you were using specific resources that they no longer were supporting. We happen to be using some of the resources. That does not mean they're bad resources. They were actually up-to-date scientifically based when we started this plan ten years ago or more now, but at the time, they were cutting edge, and they no longer are there. So we fell into the bucket of school districts that afforded the grant. There are lots of different levels. Really proud to say that we were awarded the entire top percent, so we were given one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars for this grant, just under two-hundred thousand dollars. Has to be used to purchase high-quality instructional materials. So the caveat is because it's a blend of a federal and a state grant, all of the money has to be expended by June thirtieth. So we've taken what's usually a fifteen-month curriculum review and adoption process and kind of truncated it down to like three to four months. So Erin Suzie, Assistant Principal at TES, is co-chairing this work with me. She is an unbelievable resource, really, really much more knowledgeable than I am about early literacy, so we are framing the work as we go forward. The TES admin team has been very, very responsive and helpful as well collectively, and we have a great team of ten faculty members, teachers, and reading specialists and special ed teachers who are steering this work, who've already given up countless hours to review multiple products. We have three more reviews with vendors coming in next week. I just received communication from DESI two days ago that they are now even tightening the timeline up more. They're hoping that we'll be able to tell them what materials we're interested in by mid-April, because they're afraid of shipping and receiving timelines, and they're really afraid that the materials won't be able to get here and meet the federal standards of having all that money and materials in place by June thirtieth. So a lot of work happening very quickly. I will come back to the committee at the end of the school year to give you an update on the literacy plan and to get a formal approval from the committee on our new resources, but excited about that amount of money. It's kind of a rare get for us, quite honestly, and allows us to really be thoughtful about our curriculum review budget moving forward.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add. Yeah, and I'd just like to add that I would really like to recognize and thank our teachers, who are giving up a ton of time and putting a ton of effort and work into this, mostly at all the elementary school right now. You know, it's great to receive the money, but the work needs to be done, and they're doing it because they know it benefits our kids, so a big shout-out to our teachers for the work that they're putting in on this, we really appreciate it.
That's great.
Question? Will any changes be done to the elementary school schedule to accommodate an increase in writing, reading, and?
So we have played with that schedule almost every year that I've been here, with the exception of this past year. So we've gone from 90-minute blocks to 80 minutes to 82 minutes. You know, there's this sweet spot between 80 and 90, and we are maintaining that sweet spot. And also, if you recall, the state changed the requirements around science and social studies at the elementary level, and gives heavy recommendations for time. Those were not necessarily done in a lot of elementary schools. So now we are, we are right on those recommendations for science and social studies. So it's even more important that we do that teachers of literacy for all concept, so that if the student is in a social studies class or a science class, we're still applying grade-level writing and reading skills.
Yeah, especially for history.
Yeah.
They can really use the literacy.
Yep.
That can apply.
Can I make my own question? Is the $198,000 enough for the literacy?
That's a great question. So I can't answer that tonight. I've done, I've reached out to school districts of similar size who are ahead of us in this work. It's going to be pretty close. This was our curriculum review cycle year anyway, and so we've managed a rolling budget over time with curriculum review. So whatever money, if it comes in at 240, you know, we will backfill, we'll negotiate that with the vendors to pay overtime like we normally do. However, that's $198,000 that doesn't come out of that account that can then be re-appropriate to other curriculars.
Awesome. Very good, thank you.
Big win.
That's great.
And you said that the teachers chose the Keys to Literacy, they were the ones who collaborated to choose this program?
The admin leadership team and I chose, Keys to Literacy is the professional development provider.
Yes, we have it up here actually.
Yeah, so they, we chose the, we signed a contract with Keys to Literacy, the teachers are picking all the resources.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, they have lots of free resources here on their site.
Yep.
Okay.
Any further discussion? 9B, which is the annual town report.
So in your drive, you will see a draft of the annual town report that we submit every year. And so it, I won't go through the whole thing, but if you've looked at it, it gives you a highlight of our return to in-person learning from this past school year, gives some bullet points and highlights about professional development, and foreshadows a little bit of the partnership work that we've done with the teachers across the equity work in the school district.
And this dovetails with the policy work that we've done. We've never brought the annual town report to the school committee for approval before, it's always been something that we've done in isolation. But one of the new policies we adopted in section A of our policy manual speaks to getting formal approval at the school committee level, so we'll be doing that moving forward.
All right, great. And with that, I'll seek a motion to approve the annual town report as drafted.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 6-0-0. Thank you. 9C, the school committee meeting schedule.
So I apologize, Madam Chair, I don't think we've talked about adjusting the schedule as much as we have this year, ever. It's been, it's been a crazy year. So basically, what we're looking at right now is to add an additional school committee meeting on April 26th. Some of the committee members I know aren't available the week of May 10th. We had to move our first and third Tuesday from May 3rd, May 17th to May 10th, then when committee members weren't available, we had to put it somewhere. So we're going to move it to April 26th, if the committee approves, and that will be the final meeting for Vice Chair Gostucci, and that will replace our May 10th meeting. Then we'll have the town meeting, town election, we'll have a new committee member or two potentially join us for the May 24th school committee meeting. So what we typically do is have one meeting in either April, May, and then certainly one in June, July, August. So we're still trying to keep that, because historically it seems to work for the committee. So we'll have our one meeting in May, on May 24th, and then June 21st, that's what I talked about earlier with Dr. Ash. So if we could create that as our June meeting, I think that would make sense, and if we could start that at 6 o'clock, I think that makes sense as well for everyone. So that's the hope, and at some point, either April 26th or May 24th, we will then set the July, we'll then set the 22, 23 school committee calendar.
I'll seek a motion to approve the amended school committee meeting schedule as presented, and that's adding the April 26th meeting and canceling the May 10th meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 6-0-0. Mr. Messina, finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nine bill warrants were presented to the school committee tonight. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. There is no signing of payroll tonight, we'll do that at your next meeting. Also in your drive are the reports that make up the February financial package, that is your school committee budget, which is currently being broken out between salaries and expenses due to us currently running two separate accounting systems in the town, as well as your revolving account balances at the end of February, and the student activity accounts at the end of February. And I will leave the March 1st enrollment to the chair.
Great. At TES, we have 819 students. At TMS, we have 393 students. At THS, we have 426 students. There are 24 out-of-district students, for a total of 1,662 students in Tingsboro Public Schools. And we can move on to school committee discussion. Grace?
Thank you for letting us go to DECA, and that's all.
Rob?
I would like to thank and congratulate Mrs. Berman on her wonderful work that she has done for our students over the years, mine included. She is considered not only just a staff member in that building or the buildings, but she's considered a friend to many of the kids, a confidential friend, who has been able to help many, many years of kids. Well, I'm not going to say many, many years of kids, because that's not too nice to say. She's been able to help many, many kids by just even being someone to listen to for them. She's done it with grace and compassion these years, and I just want to give a special shout-out to her and thank her for that. I want to congratulate Grace and all of her team members for a wonderful job. Continue to make Tingsboro Schools proud, so thank you for that. And I, you know, I'm going to echo something that was said earlier, thank you to the, to the members of the building committee for all their hours of work. Greatly appreciate everything they've done, and keeping our fingers crossed for those upcoming votes. And that's it.
Thanks, Rob. Dustine?
I'd like to say congratulations. So proud of you, it's so great to see you doing so well. Thank you. And good luck in Atlanta. And also, I'd like to tell everyone to come out and have any questions, come tomorrow and find out about the building, and hopefully we get as much money and we can do it. That's it.
Dr. Branco?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Tony?
Thank you to our community member for coming out this evening and speaking in front of us. It's always nice to see, and as a member of the school building committee, there has been a lot of work that's gone into that. So I ask everyone, if you can, to please come out tomorrow and ask your questions in person. Social media doesn't always paint the proper picture, so if you have questions, please come out, ask them, any concerns, voice them. There may be things that we haven't even thought about, so. To all the other members on the committee, we have, there has been countless meetings, and those are just the ones you know about, all the things that happen behind the scenes with Dr. Flanagan, Dr. Branco, and his staffs, or their staffs. Just a lot of work has gone into this, and it's not just a pretty picture, it's a project we need, so. That is it.
I also want to thank Cheryl Berman for three decades of service to the community, good luck with retirement. Congratulations, Grace and your team, good luck in Atlanta, we'll be rooting for you. Something that, at the last meeting I brought up was, we made a motion to ask D-Bus to agree not to mandate the windows be open on the bus. I know the school committee received notification last week that they agreed to that request, so, I know it wasn't in the update tonight, but, so D has agreed not to mandate the windows be open anymore, so I think that's good for the students. And again, please come to the info session tomorrow night about the school committee, the school building project. To Tony's point, there's a lot of questions on social media, and people are chiming in who don't necessarily have the facts, so come get your questions answered by the experts. Thank you.
Awesome. Sorry to be so repetitive, but 37 meetings plus, that's crazy. I just think that's so much work, and you guys have done an amazing job. I just want to echo all the hard work that you've put in together. I have to tell a little story, I don't know if this is the right time, but I think this will be a good time. Back a couple years ago, about a year and a half ago, I had a graduation at the Tingsboro Elementary School because of the pandemic, and it was just a preschool graduation, but we used the field, because at that time, we couldn't use any indoor space. And so there was a lot of preschool parents from around different communities coming, sitting on the field, looking over at the school, and just the comments they made, they go, what school is this? And I'm thinking, they must know it's Tingsboro, they're in Tingsboro. But anyway, but they were like, what school is this? This is amazing, look at that school, how gorgeous it is, look at these fields, look at, they were just flabbergasted about it. And so what I'd like to see in the future is the same thing happen when they go to the high school complex, and they look over and they go, wow, what town is this? Look at this. Because that will complete our whole picture in our school. And even though my kids are out of the school, they had a wonderful opportunity to have this brand-new elementary school and go through the whole thing, a wonderful high school, and I'd like to see now that, you know, you know, the kids can also have that middle school experience, so you have the whole picture. So I think it's really important that we all get out and vote positively for this project that you've put so much time into. Thank you, that's my little piece, but I also want to congratulate you. That was amazing, I saw you on the webpage, and that's amazing. And I also want to thank Dr. Branco, too, for all that work to get that huge grant, that means a lot. Thank you. And that's it.
Sure.
You're welcome. Yeah. Well, I could go on, you know me.
That's a tough one to follow.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so congratulations to all people we recognized earlier tonight, and certainly Cheryl Berman, 32 years in this district, consummate professional, just a passionate educator, committed to kids, just can't say enough wonderful things about her. Last reminder is grad night, another special organization that supports our kids, they have comedy night this Friday night, so I don't know if tickets are available, but we can certainly find out, if the ticket's still available, thank you. So grad night is this Friday night at Princeton Station in Shelsford, so a great opportunity to come together and raise some money for our seniors, take care of them, so.
They're going to have raffle baskets and all kinds of ways to donate money.
Raffle, beautiful.
Caskets and.
Raffle baskets, auctions, bring you all it, great.
Grace, congratulations to you and your team. We knew that you were going to do great when you guys presented, because you did such a wonderful job presenting, and so they, they obviously saw your hard work and your great skills, so congratulations, we look forward to hearing about the results from Atlanta. And to speak about the middle school building project, we do have that community forum tomorrow night. Whether you think you support the school, or whether you think you don't support the school, I still encourage you to come out and ask your questions from the people that have the facts. To a few people's points, you know, Facebook is not really the best place for facts, this community forum, you can get the questions answered straight from the people that have the answers. And with that, we do have a need for executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. We'll return from executive session only to adjourn the regular session, and I'm seeking a motion for executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And that will require a roll call vote.
In favor?
In favor?
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
Thank you, we are in executive session.